Okay.
We've got enough acid down there.
Called this regular council meeting to order here at City Hall, June 1st, 2021. Let's see, do we have any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay, are there any citizens comments this evening? Nope. Okay, consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, May 18th, 2021.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance 0601, 2021, in the amount of $108,972.94. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Bob's hauling quote, $10,080. I have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. KMEA Midstates, in the amount of $13,418.90. I have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, department heads, electrical department, do we have anything from Jeff this evening?
Jeff has been sick today. They're complete on First Street, correct? Or do they still have to fill in the holes?
I don't know about the holes. I know they have the one hole with the three-phase transformer bank up here. They gotta take that and transfer it over. But everything else is taken out.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns that Jamie can pass on to Jeff? Moving on, Water Department, Jason.
Well, sewer, we just been, of course, we got called out. The guys got dead and found grease in the lines up on North Exchange. And then as far as anything else on sewer-wise, everything's been working really well, so no comment on that. And the water, I have to back up of what I said on the media for the plan. Something was wrong, is what I'm thinking, something had went wrong with the hot machine in there that reads the nitrates. So that's why, that's why the nitrates have been slowly, have been taken out. It's reading like eight the whole time, nine, then eight to seven, and reading like that. So I thought, well, it's good, we aren't pumping that hard. Well, that wasn't the conclusion, because when the hot guy got here the second time, it jumped up that machine and we spiked it again. And just right before he got there, I took a water, a state sample with per nitrates. And we, they got a 12 milligrams per liter. So that being said, we got a letter in the mail. We had to disperse the letters out to everybody and they sent me another sample to take. And knocked down, so we got down the nitrates way like it's supposed to be now, since the true reading is on there. And so hopefully, what they're, from what I understand of the letter, is what they're gonna take the average between this one and that one, and then they're gonna hopefully meet in the middle under it. I'm hoping it's at 9.99 or lower. So that's what's happened there. So as far as the media, we could keep it on there if you want, or take it off for a little while and then address it when that's, when it's completely where it's not gonna handle it. Because right now, it's still handling it. That's why the vessels have not been regening like they were supposed to. And I, now I understand, I just didn't give it no thought, because that, that, that machine is what tells that whole computer and that whole thing what to do. And so that's why I thought, you know, you gotta, I kinda went on the word of the hot specialist of what was going on. So I just, so I just wanna let everybody know that's what's going on with that.
You were getting false readings.
From that machine. Mm-hmm. It had to have been, because that machine's telling the vessels and the computer, saying, hey, we got good, we got good nitrates here, so we're gonna bypass more instead of going through the vessels. And so that's what it was doing, because if that's telling the machine, or the computer what to do, that's... And I'm kinda, I'm just going off of that, because that is way over my head. It's so technical, I don't understand none of it on how it reads it or anything like that. So from now on, I'm, once a week, I'm gonna start taking a manual reading of it myself. Because that, that just kinda scares me. I don't know how long it's been going on. I know we haven't been pumping that much water at all till here the last two or three weeks. And then, so that's, thank goodness on that, so... But it read 12, so it's only 2 milligrams per, you know, milligrams per liter past the 10, so... I'm just letting you guys know what was going on there. That's my thinking of what happened. So as far as the media up there, you guys, like I said, you could take it off for a while, see how these are gonna still do. And then, oh, it is off, okay. Well, just leave it off and then we'll kind, we'll address it down the road if that media is completely to where it's not handling it. I might use more salt, but I think the media is still pretty good.
You take manual samples once a month, is that...
I'm gonna start, not of nitrates, I just take two bags of T's for chloroform and then for the state. And then I take the, every day we take water residual for how much chlorine, free chlorine's in the water. And that's what I, that's what we do every day. But that's got me bothered, because I, you know, you gotta trust what's going on with your high-tech people and if it ain't cutting the mustard down, I'm gonna start checking it myself.
Just curious, I didn't know how it worked, if you take your reads off of the equipment or you take a manual sample?
No, it's a, it's a, just like a little toolbox that has a test kit in it. I just take it around to different places. And I'll just start doing that once, once a week. Every Monday, see how it is on that Monday. And that's what I did today, I took, I took two of them everywhere else and it was 7.89, 7.2. So I'm, it's, it's way lower than like it's supposed to be.
You guys heard on that sewer truck yet?
Say again?
On that sewer truck, have you guys heard anything?
No, they just stood up the phone.
Okay.
Missing anything else? I don't think so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason under the Water Department? Okay, moving on to Street and Park Department, what do you got, Jason?
Other than helping with Jubilee, which I'm gonna let everybody know the guys did great, I thought we did good.
Yeah.
And then we got the hole filled up there on First, which was a long time coming. I heard a lot of compliments on it, so it must be pretty good. And I think mid, or low 80s to mid 80s, I'm gonna go ahead and start milling. I can't wait. No offense to your nice, cool weather, but I gotta keep going. So I ain't gonna jinx it, but in the rain, but I need, we need to get the milling street. We're gonna try to get this done, so... I'm gonna try to do that starting maybe Wednesday, Friday, and then just start going from there.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason, the Street and Park Department? Jason, I've gotten a few compliments in regards to you and your crew in taking care of the park for preparation for Jubilee. It was really nice to hear that today over at the library, when people would come in and say that they, they really enjoyed that.
I'll pass it upon to Pam.
I will be addressing, will be addressing that.
Yeah, I'm gonna give some to the girls, too.
Yeah. I wanted to tell you and your crew, thank you from them, so it's great.
Yep, I'd love to know, thanks.
Okay, all right, moving on, Police Chief, Chief Adams.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Speechless.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for the chief? Okay, moving on, Fire Chief, we hear anything from Chief Sanders?
Nothing.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns to pass on to Chief Sanders? Okay, City Administrator, Jamie.
Um, Jubilee's done, so Pam and I spent the day just kinda cleaning up and recapping, making notes, making plans, um, bills went out, things are going good. I feel like I'm missing something. Um, I do want to bring this... Um, no, I don't wanna call, it's a, it'd be a, it's a sidewalk replacement program. The City of Russell does it. It's just an idea. I know people in the past have talked about just different sidewalks and, you know, if they can't necessarily afford it, maybe we could. And I'm bringing this as we're talking for the budget, but, you know, we have the Capital Projects, we have $75,000 and $30,000 for our streets and others. So I didn't know if it would be maybe possible if we wanted to try to adopt something like this. You know, they cap it out at $750 on one property frontage and $1,200 for properties of two frontages. But it's just kinda something that I stumbled upon when I was looking for something else and thought it, it might be worth a shot trying to get something like that for here, our community, for, for our residents. I, I went on their website, they had the manual and the application here and, I mean, it's something we can just move the numbers around on the budget or set a certain amount on, on the budget and, you know, they can apply and, and we can maybe get some of the streets in front of their houses, or streets, sorry, some of the sidewalks looking good again. I, I, they haven't updated this since '15, so I don't know what the cost of everything is now, but definitely just saw it and it looked like a pretty good program, so I wanted to pass it along.
Or do you want that money to come out of, I guess, like if we wanted a budget for it?
So as I said, we have seven, like this year in 2021, we had in Capital Projects Streets, we had $75,000 budgeted, and then in Capital Projects Other, we had $30,000 budgeted. So, I'm not saying we have to start it this year, but we are beginning the 2022 process for budget. So, I mean, if it is something you guys wanna implement this year, we can definitely get started, but, um, because I, I think, I think the money would be available for, for something like this. And, I mean, who knows who will even, who will even use it, but having that as an option, even, even just setting aside $5,000 or $10,000 a year, you know, and once you hit that, then you're, the money's gone. I mean, it's not, everybody can get it at the same time, like we'll budget the money, this amount will be awarded and...
First come, first served kinda deal?
Mm-hmm.
Think it's a good idea. So they are just given the money per how much lot they have and then they hire their contractors to come in there and replace the sidewalk accordance to the... They're kinda doing it off of like their ordinance of if your sidewalk is not in good shape, then you have 60 days to get it fixed.
Right.
And in doing so, they're doing a cost share with them. Which I know that we already have something similar to it. I mean, we have an ordinance that it's the property owner's...
Right.
Responsibility.
And I just, I mean, you know, we get, we just get a lot of complaints about properties looking the way that they are. And I'm not saying that we need to go out full-force zoning and say you have 60 days, but maybe this could be an option to, to get people to want to make their properties look better. I mean, it's...
Yeah, if it's something we do, I would rather take out, you know, enforcing it on people.
Right.
Leave it up to the property owners if they can afford to do it and they would like to.
Yeah, that's my thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, and the only reason I say that is, is because we spent $200,000 on a sidewalk on First Street. And so we benefited certain people in that area...
Right.
And not the rest of the town. So I don't feel like it's right to enforce it on people that, you know, maybe they can't even afford to replace four-foot of concrete.
Right.
And then enforcing it for them to do it. So, I mean, I'd be okay with something like that.
Worth a shot, just to see.
I'll get something wrote up to fit our community better.
It might not hurt to just kinda figure out, I don't know what a typical, I don't know if there is such thing as a typical lot or what, but kinda figure out, I don't know, call Chris Mantle or people that do concrete.
Right, like the standard lot size.
Yeah, what would it cost to do?
I mean, on average, on average, $750 is, will only do like 94 square feet to take out and put in.
Right.
So it's not a lot.
But that's what I'm saying, kinda get an idea so that we've got an idea, you know, this year we could do 10 of them and offer $2,000.
Right. And like I said, you know, this was revised in '15, so back, you know, what were costs back in 2015.
Well, I think if you look, do some more research on this and kind of tailor something that would fit the City of St. John and the residents, then we could look at it then.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was something you guys would be interested in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea.
How do you ensure that they're gonna use the money on the project?
It would be after it's, after it's finished.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At worst.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else, Jamie?
No good idea, Jamie.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie? Jamie, again, as I told Jason, I got quite a few people in today commenting and saying they really enjoyed Jubilee this year and did a bang-up job getting everything ready, getting a park ready, please pass on to Pam, the kudos.
Yeah.
So I've told people that if you see, see them, say something.
Yeah.
You know, don't tell me, tell them.
Yeah.
They're the ones that need the pat on the back, so. Good job. All right.
We will have more food vendors. I think that was one of the...
Yep.
It's just hard to compete with one another.
Yeah, they had something.
Oh, never mind.
For the last couple of years, we had, I was pretty happy with Jubilee.
Yeah.
It was good.
All right, did we hear anything from City Attorney John, everyone?
No, I'm pretty sure he's on the beach right now, enjoying life.
Oh, God. Ten, all right. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie to pass on to John? Okay, moving on to old business, Ordinance 1071-20 into Ordinance 1082-21, house numbers.
I think Alan and the Police Department are still checking that and going over it.
Yeah, we were, got click order and we, we get to it every day unless we're just swamped that day or, yeah, I mean, obviously Jubilee weekend, we were a little busy, but yeah, we've been going. I mean, it's better than what, I mean, we went large amount, we're down to, I think, 50, 50 residents. We check every day, so, you know, it's, it's gotten better.
Good, good.
I don't know if, maybe if, for the reminders, if we still have those, do we still have those numbers? We don't, okay, never mind.
No, those were, those were the pre-order, whatever, whoever came in, we ordered for them.
Okay.
It wasn't, I was just buying a set of mail.
Oh, okay, never mind then, I was just gonna bring up something, but then, yeah, that answers that, so. But we're working on it.
All right, excellent. Okay, unless anybody has anything more to discuss on that subject, moving on to Sewer Report.
Uh, Mayor was, they're, they're starting, so we're, we're going with that.
Any discussion on that subject? Okay. All right, Property Code violations, how's that coming, Jamie?
Um, I've been in contact with Chad, um, just letting him know about the houses that need cleaned out. And he said that, they, did I tell you guys this last time? I don't know why, I just said, um, so basically, I just kinda told him that I don't feel comfortable sending anyone in to clean it and he said that they can do some, um...
I think basically they're gonna pick the roof off of it, they're gonna scrape pots up inside, put it in containers and haul it apart and camp.
Yeah, they'll try to just send what they can to the landfill here and what they can to the landfill there. He said it might cost a little bit more, but we won't have to worry about trying to get, get it cleaned out. Um, I do need to get in contact with Austin and Preston to see, I know that here, within the next week or two, they talked about getting on First Street, so, um, we're just continuing the best we can. I know, I still haven't seen an invoice from Chad, but he did say it was gonna be $5,000 or less for, for Fourth Street over here. So I told him that we'd like to see the invoice to just kind of know how much we're having involved in each property. So he did, he did verbally tell me that.
I don't want, I mean, I'm not trying to push these guys, but, so we've got five houses to tear down? When do we have to have them submitted to go on tax rolls? Isn't it the first of August?
August or September. August or September.
I, I just think that if, the more we can get tore down before that time period and get them a set for next year's property taxes, the better we'll be.
Okay.
Like I said, I know they're busy too with other stuff, but...
Right. Yep, I will talk to them about that.
And then I think we need to start the process all over on some more houses.
Yeah, so I guess I can bring it up on this one, because, so we did get a, um, a summons for the tax sale that will be coming up. So there is a property that we have been working on for several years that is gonna be listed on that when, when the time comes around. So the 112 South Prairie, David Dill's house. So, um, I kinda talked to Mandy a little bit, they don't have a date for sure set. They have a lot of jury trials going on the next couple of months, so she's a little bit worried about when we'll get into the courtroom. I offered our courtroom, but I don't know if I wanna take it. So I'll keep you guys posted on that one, because I, I mean, that was on our list in the beginning and I think he does have a warrant out for that property, but obviously he's not paying his taxes. So we'll just let the tax cell handle it and hopefully something good will come out of that.
All right. Any more discussion on any of the properties on that list? Okay, how's the truck parking coming along?
I still have a herd bag from the engineer. And I'll, they'll be, I'm gonna contact other companies and kinda see what they need to... It's hard to get ahold of some people.
All right. Anybody have anything under that subject? Okay, moving on, Engine for Power Plant, status.
You guys just approved the Midstates quote for some of the work. I know Jeff sent over pictures of the engine, but everything's rolling as far as I have been told.
All right, unless anybody has anything under that subject, last subject under, Bulk Water Project?
I have not received an update from Jeff for a while on this. I know that he ordered a box so he could get everything rewired and it not be out in the open, so I'm still waiting to see if it runs. So...
Anybody have any questions or comments under that? Moving on to new business, Garage Door Quotes.
So I sent over the email this afternoon, this morning, whatever time it was. The insurance adjuster sent over our statement of loss and the proof of loss off of the estimates that Jeff and I had got, got worked up. And obviously, they go with the lowest bid. The sturdy bill had the lowest bid for the, for the doors and then they're gonna need some welding work done. And then Solis had, had theirs in. So the total, total loss they have is a little over $11,000, our deductible's $5,000, so we're gonna get about $6,100 back. I do need permission from you guys in the form of a motion for Mark II sign the papers that need to go back to our, excuse me, insurance adjuster, so we can get, get that going. And then I will, I'll call and we can get, get it started, so we can get it fixed. I do know Jeff has talked about making it all one, like putting the two doors into one. I do have quotes for like the one door from the companies, if that is something that you guys are interested in and just paying that extra amount. I know when I talked to Trent about it, he seemed to think that to do that, it would be like $15,000 more dollars.
On his part?
On his part. So, I mean, it's definitely gonna be a project, because I don't know that those two doors are even level. And then I think that they would want to go to that height like the same as the north door. So that's, I mean, that's an option. Obviously, insurance is only gonna pay for what we have existing, so this is, this is all there. So if that is something that you guys would like to see, I can have Trent get a quote submitted for that. And then I do have, I believe I have two quotes for the doors already, that we had them priced for both options, just in case. But I do only have the one from Trent.
There's a big difference in $20,000 and $5,000 on brickwork. I say we just put the operators up.
I agree.
Put it back where it goes. What's the timeframe on the doors, did they tell you? Is it gonna be out of hand?
Didn't they say it was at least four to six weeks out?
That's what I heard.
And like, we need to call him tomorrow, because I think price is going 20%.
Yeah. I'm surprised it's only four to six weeks from what everybody says.
Oh, really?
It's till May 14.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I've heard wild stuff.
An addition I'm doing, they told me 14 weeks, and it was a pretty standard door.
I say we put it back where it goes, was just me?
I'd make a motion to have Mark sign the quote and just go.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to 2022 Budget.
So I just have, I mean, I have that on there, I don't know if you want to start picking five, a meeting and going over them, or...
We have until Ju...
The end of Ju, August is when we have to have everything published, I think.
I've been through most of them. I mean, there's a lot of them that are just pretty much cut and dry, simple.
They're the same, a lot of them are the same.
I mean, the solid ways, special highway, employee benefits, expenditure, quit center. Now the Fire Department. I think that is the Office, the Police Department, and City Clerk. I mean, I didn't have, those had very little change, if any, and... A lot of the other ones that I have questions about are, I mean, some of them aren't like all these. I'm just assuming they're leaving everything the same and just adding only what they put in there. I guess I'd like to see a little more. I mean, I would rather not have to sit there and figure out what the cost difference is. And I think it's pretty easy, I'm sure you sent that to them in an email form, so they can punch it in, transfer it over, and give us a total.
Yeah, we can.
I don't know, I've got a bunch of questions on some stuff, so it's, it's whatever you guys wanna do as far as discussing them.
Eighteen, eighteen of them? Wouldn't there be eighteen pages?
Eighteen probably.
Didn't we have a special meeting last year? I'd just assume do that again, to be honest, that's just, that's just me, I'd just like to say that.
Just want one special meeting?
But I, I, I mean, for me, prior to that meeting, I would like to see some of these a little more complete.
Okay.
I mean, if I wanted to sit there and add everything up, then I wouldn't have had them do their budget. I mean, some of them are, but then I have questions on some, some are just not.
You just do a little bit more detail on that, that's what we need, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand that we've got some, a lot of increases and some of that stuff you can't, you can't help.
Yeah.
I mean, fuel, you're not gonna be able to help that, cost of fuel's going up and equipment or material and stuff, but... equipment or material and stuff, but, I mean, just having everything transferred over and tell us this budget went from a hundred and sixty-eight thousand to a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Right.
Still like to see that.
So can we do like sometime before next meeting, a spe, a special meeting, why the next council meeting on the fifteenth? Next Tuesday, the eighth, or?
I'm good with whatever.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to not, you know, if we have questions, come back to it, it'd be nice to talk about it next council meeting, but...
My schedule's free the eighth, I'll pencil it in.
I'm at seven o'clock, yeah, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock at the eighth, that'd be fine.
And then do you want me to just have, like, each department head to be here and we can, like, have set times, like, they only, like, we can all show up at once and then when they're done talking about their, their certain budgets, then they can leave if they don't, if we don't have anything else, so we're not holding them all up?
That's fine.
It doesn't really matter to me what order they go in, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, yeah, I guess that's fine.
If we can just go ahead and do that, just have them all come in at the same time and then...
I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, I don't know if we necessarily need to have a fire department here, their budget hasn't changed for ten years. I mean, there's no changes up or down, it's stayed the same.
I'll be honest with you, I've built into it all the way, so, I don't really know.
If you want them all here, that's fine.
I don't, I mean, it's up to you guys, but...
I mean, Jeff and Jason and, and...
Yeah, Mike is very good about his budget.
Alan probably needs to be here, you, and I think that is the gist of it.
Yeah.
Our four main.
Right, yeah.
People.
Yeah.
Everybody's okay with that?
I guess I'll look over it and we need to talk Mike about it, we talked about it next time, next meeting, can we, yeah.
All right.
That's the eighth.
The eighth, June eighth at seven P.M.
I put it in my phone before, I forget.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on that? Let's just do it.
Yeah, let's, I was gonna say, let's just do a motion on that. Would somebody like to make a motion to have a special meeting regarding the 2022 budget on the eighth at seven P.M.?
Some move.
I have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
No sense in saying it twice.
Exactly. Okay, moving on, now I may be butchering this, H. Redule, is that correct?
Hawk Redule.
What?
Hawk Redule, it's the nitrate company that comes out to help.
Oh.
It's three thousand dollars like it was last year, and it's the company that comes out to help with the nitrate removal, right? Kind of one of those things that we have to do.
Sounds pretty important. I'm just wondering, it's not, it's not working very good, so I'm wondering.
I just think it was a fluke deal, so I don't know what went on.
And that's, that's what I've, like, if people come into the office, like...
This wasn't the same guy as the last one.
Yeah, there was a glitch in the system and something went wrong.
Right.
I mean, that's really...
Well, one time out of all I've been here, so I, you know, I gotta rank it up to that.
And there is a second sample going in that will clarify everything, so we just need to wait till that second sample comes and...
And see what it says, okay?
But I don't know who else we'd find to do that work. I mean, I can look into it, but...
No, no, I think it's, I don't think you go messing with stuff like that.
It's inevitable.
Is this basically whenever we call them and need them, or are they out here on rotation?
Rotation.
So how often do they come, once a month?
No, it's every three, I think.
Is it three quarterly, or is it every, by it?
I think it's once a quarter.
Yeah, that's what I think, too. Seems like it's every three.
'Cause I also check that CL seventeen as well, which is a core that tells them how much chlorine's getting pumped out of the system, so that does help. 'Cause they, they got that hooked up to the dialer, or if it drops.
Yeah, that's what I'm like now, I was gonna say it.
I just need a hook.
Three thousand dollars.
See, we can't even...
Yeah, I just need a hook.
Is that up here?
You just signed it?
So that's, that's why, he has to rattle that stuff off, I just said, there's...
Right, right.
Okay, well, if...
I'd make a motion to have Mark sign the contract for the Hawk Industry or Hawk Service Plus for three thousand dollars, so.
I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, where do I sign?
Let me just go back, back, like, next.
Is that up secret place beside?
Yeah, so right next to that.
Right next to C. St. John?
Perfect.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on to the nitrate notice.
Yeah, we already talked about that, yeah.
Okay, all right, we have a three-minute executive session to discuss potential hire for the swimming pool. Need everybody around the table?
Some move.
I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, we'll resume at seven thirty-nine. Called this meeting back to order, I entertain a motion to, oh, make a hire, right, a little candleless.
At eight twenty-five?
Yes.
Some move.
I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, having no more business, I do...
Hold on, one second. Jamie?
Yes.
For our next meeting, for budget meeting, would you send out an updated of where we stand with 2021's budget?
Yes.
For all departments?
Yep.
You know, the breakdown? I'd like to see that kind of compared to where we are in a year.
I will send and print, I will send it and have printed documents for that night as well. If you want printed before that, come and see me.
I'll do that.
Yeah, I've got mine printed, but...
And I, I can print your guys' out either tonight or tomorrow, whenever you stop by.
You can just send me all my stuff and I'll print out what I need.
Okay, now, anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, beating adjourn.